On the 16th at Bacchus and Brew, we play music bingo. And it is so fun. He's playing the 16th.
Good evening everyone.
It's always a Thursday.
We're gonna start this meeting in one second here. So we're gonna start the meeting at 6:31. Can we just rise for the pledge allegiance? Tonight we have Army retired Mr. Dave Alvarado from the Vander Brothers 1234. And we have Commander Phil Ramirez with us. And if you could all please rise. I'll give you the mic sir.
Please place the flag of the United States of America for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Both born and pre-born.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado. Vote on Mr. Lucine Manager.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Cashro Gita.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Hi, Saul. Nice evening.
Bye, bye.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Crosby.
Here.
Mayor Hepburn.
Here. Thank you guys for coming, really appreciate it.
Welcome.
Thank you for serving. We have a presentation, Mr. Dormer, is that correct?
Yes, we do, sir. They'll be doing it via online. I do believe they're online. And JR, are we ready?
Ready.
I'm gonna have people on my screen real quick.
Yeah, Mr. Briglio.
Riot?
I'm gonna thumbs up that question, shall we? Army, your turn. So, hi everyone, my name is Teylan Briglio. I am with RealDan. I am here today to present on the electric vehicles charging station plan. Results specifically for the city of Laverne. The Board Participating in the project budget by Southern California Association of Governments. House and Governor Beller. The project manager from SCAD is also online today. The Board participated in this project for perhaps a couple of years now, with 17 other cities in Southern California. And so we just wanted to review some of the results. Specifically, your city. So I wanted to start by going over just a few key objectives of the project. So there are objectives from really pretty different stakeholders. One was more scanning. So they were trying to create a regional suitability analysis of EV infrastructure. And to integrate that into their EV atlas. Like Real trying to feedback to cities on their challenges and successes by EV adoption throughout the course of the project. And creating resources out of these will not just be created separately within the project, but for other cities throughout the entire region. For cities, some of the specific outcomes were also guided to the population best practices. Looking at some specific sites in newer cities and developing sample EV layouts for some of the highest scoring sites with suitability analysis and ability to handle their load and challenges where they had best of their problem. We also gained some help throughout this project. Participating in community events understanding what their barriers were to EV adoption. And also gathering two other key stakeholders and project managers on how they, on what their barriers, installing EV charging. Some of the existing conditions can leave you overwhelmed now. So something that's pretty important is that car capacity event is being quarantined back in August, which is what would require 100% of the fleet capacity or still 2% zero investment by 2035. This formalizes Governor News' executive order that targets 8 million EVs on the border by 2030. And based upon an analysis that the CDC completed, 1.2 million chargers will be needed to support 8 million EVs in 2030. And so where do we stand today? As we had a last year 1.4 million planes sold in California, presenting nearly 1 in 5 of the car sales. And there's almost 80,000 charging stations in the state. That's a lot, but it's still far far away from the 1.2 million that we know. So what does it mean for the city of Laverne? So if we take the statewide analysis that we've done and scale it down to just the city of Laverne by the end of the decade, we'd expect over 6,500 EVs to be registered in our city by 2030. And maybe hundreds of thousands publicly available charging stations to support those vehicles. That's assuming the CDC's analysis of primarily focusing on level two charging. Given funding like NEVI probably didn't point out, we can look at how increasing the force of DC fast charging, which is where you recharge it usually up to 80% in under half an hour. How does that impact charging being for sure? And so we created a pathway that looks at around 25% of chargers being DCs and 15% of chargers being DC fast charging. And so you can see the results on the table here. That is not to say that any of these pathways are prescriptive for the city of Laverne, but really help provide, really help understand what different options may be available to support a population of Laverne. As I mentioned, we did a suitability analysis not for the entire region. So focusing in just the city of Laverne, we actually developed four different scenarios throughout the course of this project to really reflect different stages of EV adoption. Or to focus on, or to manage different focuses. So we've got some scenarios that, for example, prioritize the RV EV adopters and really focus on those private EV locations. And then we've got other scenarios that really prioritize some of the harder to reach areas, multifamily dwellings, low-income communities, disadvantaged communities. These results are being integrated with SCAD's EV atlas. So it'll be accessible to the public, the cities developers and planners, to really identify priority areas for EV infrastructure. These can be used by the city to charge in outreach to the private sector or identify locations of private public or even print sites. Another thing that we can do with the results of this is if we start to compare multiple scenarios together, there's additional things that we can take away. So we find that emphasis from a lot of different cities, there are certain parts within the city that are scoring very highly across all the scenarios that we go get. And so this helps provide an area that we should really prioritize for some of these early EV deployments. And then on the flip side, we've got areas that are scoring poorly across most of these. And so we know that we can avoid them to save some money. And lastly, the areas sort of in purple here, you can see that the scoring changes pretty significantly throughout the given scenarios. And this helps to inform Daisy on when we should target certain areas as we need EV infrastructure, the city begins to grow. One we never pointed, when we took the top supply sites from the suitability analysis, sort of filtered them out for suitability and then requested feedback from the city on what sites we should conduct a site evaluation for. And the site evaluation consisted of conceptual layout and construction process estimates for the EV charging stations. We've also created blank templates that will be available on SCAD's website for cities to use for future projects that they want to develop. One of the things that we referenced in the stage was how to develop these types of projects. And so we created a standardized design guide to help inform not just the project, the EV here, but for any future projects. And so for one example, we referenced 2019 EV codes as a starting point to size public projects. And that has the lines very, the new construction codes in 2019 align actually very closely with the 2022 code provisions or modifications to existing buildings. We then provide some recommendations to exceed this requirement in small and limited dwellings. It provides ready for all tenants. And we also recommend DC fast charging precise where we expect to score the goal of under 10. We drive them throughout the project, or maybe 100% of times a day. It's important to note that the suitability analysis tends to capture all the relevant characteristics that make a site viable. And so factors like power, water, size, proximity of power, and ADA compliance, all impact the viability and overall cost to install EV infrastructure. And so looking at Laverne Civic Center. This is a very miserable type of community. These can be charged and be great to other support staff or the public that are coming in. It's very well made, so it's a very, you know, safety and let me be charged for the night. At the site, we recommend nine levels of charging ports given the work量size and it's a critical time. And we need relatively moderate ADA, ADA, completely new access aisle and maybe some grading text application for ADA. And we estimate that first of all, it's a possible amount of $100,000,000 or a 180,000 dollar cost. We also looked at certain policies throughout the course of the project, specifically regarding Assembly Bill 1236 and AB 97. And just for some background, AB 1236 required cities to pass a legislative and develop a checklist that streamlines their EV charging station recovery process. And AB 97 was passed in 2021, which superseded this in a way that then established fine lines for cities to do it in. And the permit would be considered complete and approved after the approval of fine lines that the cities have in process already. There's a flowchart there on the slide that kind of explains the process. Depending on the size of the buildout, that would impact the fine line under the grid side. So when we sat down with the city of Laverne to understand your city's charging process, we believe that you guys are compliant with AB 1236. And the way that happens, and the way we perform to be compliant is by not being fully compliant with the law, which does contain the streamlined ordinance and checklist required under AB 1236. I do want to note that if you were to go to Phil Business website, which is tracking this throughout the entire state, you may see that they are not, that the city may not be compliant. Lastly, those are not looking at, looking at cities that are adopting other regulations that have been embedded. And so they may still encourage cities to take these next steps of passing the board of ordinances and checklists. We also find that the city is permitting EV charging stations in a timely manner. Residential permits are typically issued through business days and commercial permits can be taken at business days. And thus, we expect Laverne to be able to meet these EV acceptance requirements. We also wanted to understand what actions the city of Laverne is already taking regarding infrastructure. You already work closely with Southern California Edison to install chargers through their charge-ready program, which is a great waste of this day of trouble and chaos. And you're already working with commercial partners to install publicly available EV charging stations. Some of the barriers that the public in the city has are pretty consistent across other cities is this guy who helps develop libraries to select proper sites. Funding will always be a constraint. How to handle ongoing operation of vehicles with chargers and then coordinating with usability upgrade infrastructure. We also engaged the community throughout this project by participating in 15 community events throughout the entire SCAD region. And we also distributed a survey, like you know, the 500 survey results, to understand perceptions on EV ownership and barriers to adoption. Some of the common barriers we found by talking with the community was a lack of awareness of the public charging station network and vehicle network. And coupled with inadequate charging network, it just exacerbates that issue. And then there's still work to be done on increasing awareness on the benefits of EVs, both financially and environmental benefits. But there are some encouraging signs. Communities are eager to learn more. And they understand that EV ownership will increase and that it is the future of our transportation systems. And we need a plan for the future. To highlight some of the survey results, some of the top barriers to EV ownership are unsurprisingly high for just almost limited range and then a lack of charging infrastructure in prominent areas like the primary residence, public parking lots, and other commercial areas. Some of the takeaways from this is that if we can look to increase the charging infrastructure in some of these part of each areas, like low-income dwellings or highly trafficked public sites, that will help increase, that may help increase consumer confidence in the current EV adoption. As part of the survey, we wanted to understand specific barriers to owners of commercial properties, both unit dwellings, and cost to get, unsurprisingly, is the major barrier to installing infrastructure. But we also found that incentives hovering anywhere between 25% to 30% of the total cost may be enough to spur adoption for a significant amount of these property owners. Permit, while not the largest barrier to adoption, they still have some room to improve, which is an area that the city can directly provide. To summarize some of the tools generated from this study, as I mentioned, SCAD has helped even the EV hackers suitable EV analysis results from this project. We've created site plan templates that cities or the developers can use during the initiative of private development and the good design guides to help determine the appropriate equality of EV infrastructure. We developed a host of fact sheets, posters, and EV guide that really provide EV 101 to a variety of stakeholders' audiences. We provided the city with a policy analysis and permitting best practices, as well as EV-specific funding resources. And we're currently finalizing our regional EV infrastructure plan, which should be available by the end of May. I want to leave the city with some best practices and some recommended next steps. One of the first things that we find that cities have done a really good job with installing infrastructure is to really establish and set goals. And so earlier in the presentation, we went through the charging station that I believe in the city. We encourage you to review that and use that to help inform some charges that the city wants to be regarding EV infrastructure. Cities can continue to pursue EV charging station projects on properties that you own and then look to occupy the city fleet and really be a leader and show that EVs can be viable for the day-to-day operations. We recognize that most of the EV infrastructure will be owned and operated by the private sector. So the city's role is really to help encourage development, policy planning, and coordination. Looking at policies like reach codes and voluntary calorie buffers to help increase EV infrastructure as part of the developments. And the city can create dedicated webpages on their website with EV resources and action system libraries to support the private sector or homeowners may be interested in installing EV chargers. And lastly, continuing to review our internal planning process and minimize costs sometimes, particularly for those larger or more complex projects, will help keep projects moving forward. And the last one of the other classes that we recommend is to outreach some private sites that we can do the site evaluation to help to spark project development. And the suitability analysis results can then target future outreach efforts beyond that. Well, thank you all for letting us present today. We'd be happy to answer any comments or questions.
Counsel, do we have any questions for Mr. Briglio? No. Do we open up public comment? We're gonna open up public comment, do we have any questions? Ms. Bocham? Come on.
Anita Bocham, 2516 Ambers. I would just like to say that there are a lot of things that go along with electric vehicles that people are not taking into consideration. Unfortunately, child slave labor is one of them. There are many countries that are forcing children as young as eight years old to mine cobalt and lithium as they are young and have the strength and backs to dig in these mines. And it's a detrimental situation. And I think if we continue building and purchasing these vehicles, then you will continue. Not to mention that there's no long-term studies as to what lithium batteries do to our planet. They are not, there's a facility that takes them in and, I mean, you know, like Styrofoam takes 50 half-lives to regenerate. They haven't even been able to calculate how long it would be for a lithium battery. So I think there are a lot of other things that need to be factored into this decision before the city moves forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bocham. Any other comments? I'm gonna go ahead and vote close public comment, bring it up to the dais. Here, Pro Tem Crosby.
I'm just getting started. My question is, I know at my place of employment, we put in a charger where we allow our employees to charge, but then overnight, we allow residents come, but they have to pay for it. It helps curb the cost. If eventually we ever do things in the city, I want to make sure, you said $17,000 per spot, that we are getting money back to help pay off those costs as well. That's not just coming out of our city funds and to make sure that we're doing a reasonable price.
Excellent question.
Any other comments? Mr. Johnson.
I grew up pumping gas and... In the seventh, it was, junior high, pumping gas, washing windows at Laverne, Texaco. It didn't take very long to fill up a tank of gas. It's completely different with electricity. That car's gotta sit there for, depending on the speed of the charger, at least an hour to recharge it. That's a big waste of real estate for an extended period of time, just having a car sit there. So that, I think, really needs to be taken into consideration when we talk about charging stations and the space that we have. I mean, we're looking for every inch of space we can find for a public safety building. How many chargers are we gonna have downtown that are just taking up extra space? That's my concern.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson. Councilor Bocham.
Yeah, I just wanna know, how many do we have to have? Is there a certain regulatory amount that we have to have in order to be compliant by any rule? And why does the city have to pay for it? Some of these companies, I'm sure, willing to get into a partnership with us to offset some of those costs that we're not spending city dollars to pay for EV and not even know where we're gonna get the place for it, put it in.
Should be the private sector.
Yeah. I mean, that's what I think. I don't think you should come out of the city's budget in order to pay for that. I'd rather pay for something else than to fire a community or have a bunch of areas. And we don't have the areas. We have existing spots that we can use, that'd be great, but I think that's where I come on that. But it's like, no, I'm just kidding.
Thank you, Councilor Bocham. Councilor Laub?
I think, you know, this is a good opener for discussions because I think things that have been brought up are things that we all want to make sure are appropriate. I think that as we're moving forward to more electric vehicles, I think there are a lot of considerations that we want to be cognizant of. I am hopeful that, you know, as we identify locations for these charging stations that actually promotes business so that people, if you've gotta be stuck somewhere for an hour, I hope you're stuck outside one of our businesses where you're gonna go spend money. So I think it's the interplay of both, right? It's really just trying to figure out where are the best locations? How can we leverage partnerships with the private sector? I mean, really just taking these into consideration. So I think these are good, this is generating good discussion that I would encourage the public. As you're thinking about this and as you're looking at it, what matters to you? And making your opinions heard so that as we move forward, we can take those issues into account so that we can make good decisions for the city.
Thank you, Councilmember Laub. Well, I think that EV charging stations are awesome. And I think that our city is way behind April as far as where we should have been. We should have had multiples. You go into other communities where you have Tesla chargers that are banks. Councilmember Robin Carter. And my wife has one. And the fast chargers are about, if you go super fast, it's $17, which is the charging aspect of it. And like Councilor Laub said, go have some food, go shop. It's really quick. And especially if you're down low, because sometimes you'll get down low, and especially with a Tesla, you get down under 20 miles, you better just hightail it to wherever the closest one is. But there are considerations where they go. First of all, we've got a lot of blank space in a lot of our parking lots that are on the far outskirts, and that's where you're gonna park in here and walk up to your restaurants. So that's one of them. The problem with the charging systems right now is you've got so many different charging vehicles now that require different connections. So that's another issue that they have to have. And I know Tesla's gonna make supposedly a universal. But I do also think it's the private sector. As one of the two council members had stated, I think the private sector, although for our vehicles that we do start purchasing through our city, which I think is a very wise idea, you know, zero carbon emissions, is to make sure that we do have charging stations at our local, whether it be City Hall, whether you down at the yard, or even through ULB and some of the other places that we live. Downtown's gonna be tough because as Councilmember Johnson said, it's very tight space. But we have a lot of open spaces, parking lots that never gets used. You've got Michael's Big Lots area there that have a ton of space on the side. You got the Target Center on the backside that no one ever goes, at least eight to 10 spaces. You've got the, you've got the Bond Shopping Center, the Sprouts Shopping Center. There are spaces there that never get used, whether it be on the side or the back or on the thing. So I think we're on the right road. I do appreciate the fact that we've got, the fact that they've got the code. So you've got the code that you got. But also, I think we need to look at the partnerships. But I'm a proponent of EV because we have one. I think we're all gonna be there at one time very soon. Where, you know, we still need that gas for the 500 miles, but that'll be a translation on too.
And Mr. Mayor, I wanna thank you all for those comments because that's in line with what staff is thinking right now. So when some of the original suggestions were put in, I believe it was 2019 or so, and the thought process has changed. You're right about the commercial spaces. I drive and launch a vehicle also. And you do need to charge for maybe 20 to 40 minutes, depending on how fast the charger's building. And you do want to get out, go to the bathroom, get a drink, read a book, or do something else like that. So those are some of the spots that we're looking at versus mostly City Hall or corporate yard. But you're right also that as the city progresses and electrifies its fleet, we will need something there. We may not need the direct charge because we can do overnight charging, that's a slower charge. But then also on the economics of it, most certainly working with the colleague and other folks to get the grants. There's a lot of money out there right now, and we want to take advantage of it. And that's one reason why we wanted to bring this to you, get some direction, but also move quickly so that there are some parameters on where you put charging stations. They don't want all of them grouped in one place. They need to be spread out. And so we want to be able to get some here in Laverne, make sure along the commercial corridors and the commercial areas, there's already rules in place about parking so that it doesn't impede your parking count. But those are all things that we're looking at. We do appreciate the comments. I don't know if the consultant has anything further?
I just, I'll just comment, I think all of your comments are very thoughtful and you're all kicking about this the right way. I think my big takeaway of this is as the city and as everyone really starts to look at how to increase the infrastructure, is to really be thoughtful about it. What makes sense for the site, what sites make sense? And then what funding can you go after to reduce those upfront costs?
Thank you, Mr. Briglio. And I do think that our relationship with the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments is extremely important, and there's money out there right now, especially with AUMD, electrification for our vehicles as far as our commercial vehicles for the city. But we are all moving towards electric vehicles. You know, we are. Can't do a trailer with it yet, Mr. Johnson, but we'll figure that out. I hope I hear her. Mr. Crosby?
Thank you for the presentation. Just one more request. When we have a presentation like tonight, if we can have copies of the PowerPoint or, and if there's a couple of copies for our audience to have that as well, so that it's difficult for all of us looking over there. And then I really know it's so hard to hear them do that. I don't know if we could put a speaker in that so that... Because I know it was hard to hear from everyone. So if there's, I know you have a microphone there, but if there's a way that we can plug the speaker in.
I have realized we have some technological issues.
I really appreciate that. You've been here for a very short period, you don't realize that we have a major issue.
Yeah, we are working on that. We had some... We had some.
What do you, I can't hear you.
We had somebody, we had somebody in about two weeks ago to give us an assessment, and we're going over that right now. We're looking at pegphones and some other stuff to upgrade the facilities and make sure that we don't have these, you know, bend the microphone closer to understand that. And I do believe that there was a copy of the presentation provided, but you're right about handouts and all that stuff.
Well, I think we can also put it on our website, too.
It was in the agenda packet.
Yeah, it was, yeah. But I think it'll be nice, too, for people to, and I do want one more comment. I do appreciate Ms. Bocham's comment. I think we need to think about where this stuff is being sourced from when you purchase a vehicle, do your research, and also to make sure that, that there's not people that are living in filth and disgusting situations to build these vehicles for us to buy them. And I think it's very important that slave labor and things like that should be always considered when you're purchasing these. So very good point. Thank you, Ms. Bocham.
End of life issues as well, as far as the, what do you do with the battery?
What's gonna happen with this when we're done with it, after the tenure we've used it? So, Ms. Allison Linder, you have a comment?
Thank you, everyone, for inviting us to speak. I just wanted to echo Taylor's comment that, you know, he gave, the council as well as Ms. Bocham, all gave some really interesting insights onto this. It's a brand-new technology. Well, not brand-new, but it's relatively new, and we're still figuring out a lot of how it's gonna work and how, you know, how it will change cities and change our behaviors. And so I think what Taylor said is spot-on, thinking about the sites that make the most sense. And, you know, I think a lot of the council members raised a really good point that, you know, thinking about compatible uses with those sites, you know, as people park, are there opportunities for them to do other things, like shop, or run errands, or go to their office, you know, where they would be having to park anyway. So you're kind of maximizing the value of that real estate. And, yeah, I just wanted to, oh, and then there was also a question about requirements for installation. So the target numbers that Taylor put in the beginning of the presentation, those are targets, and those are specifically required. However, there are, there are leave requirements that are under development, for instance, for public transit. So if you're operating your own public transit vehicles, you will be under those requirements. And if we have, if you have more questions about that, we can, you know, break down some of those details for you offline. But just to clarify, are you the number to the presentation specifically, the requirements? And I think the council brought up very astutely that those are being provided both by the public sector and by the private sector. So it's definitely about doing things that are relevant. And just all in all, I wanna thank you for your participation in this. Yeah, you did this with 18 different cities around the region, and, you know, we really appreciate the diversity of the region and, you know, the ability for your city to share its information in the local house, so we can inform how this would work at the regional level. So really wanna thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much. So, Mr. Domer, you've got direction then, as far as where we're going with this? Do we need to make any motion or anything, or just face the presentation and then you're gonna, we're still working through with our community development department and correct this here?
Yes. Thank you very much for that direction.
Thank you. We have announcements and upcoming community events. This is not for public comment, this is for announcements. So we have Mr. May. George May, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, city staff, Laverne residents. We've got a pretty good lineup for February and March. All programs and events we'll be discussing, they have limited attendance, so they require registration. You can do that in-house, or you can go online by going visit dot everycountylibrary.org/events and just narrow the search by our library, Laverne Library. So our first program is going to be this Wednesday, February 8th, at 6 o'clock. It's Dances for Around the World. Dancer Theresa Smith will take you on a cultural dance tour journey. She will be discussing different dances like the ballet, Charleston, and more. And this is for ages five through 12, with parent or caregiver. Then the next day, we are having a program here for targeting teens. It's called Draw a Self Portrait. It's being done in celebration of African-American and Black History Month. The attendees will be learning to draw portraits, self-portraits in the style of Armand Jean Michel Basquet. You will learn about his life, his works, and also you will be introduced to other African, influential African-American artists. So again, this is for ages, for ages 13 through 17.
That's February 9th?
February 9th, yes. So February 8th for the Dances for Around the World, and February 9th, Draw a Self Portrait. Next program is titled Meet the Artist, Alma Thomas. This again is done in celebration of African-American history and Black History Month. We'll discuss her, Alma Thomas's work, her art, and also you'll be given an opportunity to create a piece of art based on her paintings. And this is designed for ages six through 12. But there's that, that is gonna be Wednesday, February 15th, at 6 o'clock. Also, we are resuming our Smarty Man Storytime sessions. Those are held every Friday, four consecutive Fridays. And they are designed for ages two to five, with parent or caregiver. And the dates for those, we are starting late February, so February 24th, March 3rd, March 10th, March 17th, and it's Fridays from 11:30 to 12. Lastly, we have installed additional Wi-Fi routers on our exterior of our building, so you will get good reception in the parking lot. So you can sit in your car.
Do you have Starbucks?
No, him down there.
I'm barring the noble.
So when you're charging your car out there, you can do your biz.
We've already had people, kids, and adults, you know, sitting on the curbs in their cars, they're on their laptops, smartphones, so, and apparently, the routers have improved reception also, Wi-Fi reception in the building itself. It's been a plus.
Thank you, Los Angeles County.
And, so, again, all these programs are limited attendance. They require registration, so you can go inside the library or online to visit dot everycountylibrary.org/events, and again, narrow the search by Laverne Library. So please come on out and support us.
Thank you, Mr. May. Jared, do we have, can we publish that on the website? Why don't we put that on the website and, you know, make it a library corner, just what's going on? We don't wanna ever lose our library, because it's such an asset for our community, so we should probably post that, if we could, and help Mr. May get his information out to our community. Okay?
Yeah, what's the Wi-Fi address?
Mr. Mayor, we've also started adding the library information to the city manager's briefing that goes out to the community, so.
That's great. Any other announcements? Mr. Domer, we have Black History Month. We probably should add that to the agenda if we could, and how can we do that to, and then maybe get a proclamation later? What's the process for that?
Mr. Mayor, I think there was not an understanding that we wanted to agendize this, so this request arose after the posting of the agenda. If the council is prepared to move to bring it on to the agenda, we require the four-fifths vote of the council to do that. If we could bring it on, talk about the proclamation, and then we issue the proclamation after.
Counsel. Your vote. Or do you want, you just need a motion?
Motion, second.
Motion.
Motion to approve the proclamation for African-Americans for the month of February.
Second.
Add it to the agenda.
All vote please.
Okay, these speakers are going.
Now, Mr. Mayor, that was the motion to put it on the agenda, so there's a motion and a second to approve a proclamation for Black History Month.
May I have a motion to approve proclamation?
I'll move.
Second. Vote please, you're very slow on those.
That was also approved by all.
And so we will get that together. Thank you. We have a consent calendar, looks like we have some items to be pulled. Item number seven. Ms. Bocham pulled item number seven.
Six F2.
Six F. This is six F.
Are you voting on everything else?
This one?
Normally we'll, the rest is a second.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and, and then the other one was number seven. I have a seven, is that correct? No, sorry. Excuse me, I gotta talk about that, sorry. We'll get you later. So we can go ahead and, let's, we can go ahead and pass everything else on consent, and we'll go back down. So any?
So six F, I pulled that.
You pulled six F?
Yes.
One F2. Six F2 is the one I pulled.
Yeah. Six F2.
The, the fire. Is it for redevatement?
Do you wanna pull one, Mr. Johnson? Six F1?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So with that, any other questions or on the other items, on consent? With that, let's make a motion. A motion, please.
A motion to approve the consent calendar, except six F1 and six F2.
Second.
Second.
That was approved by all.
So we'll take these in order. Six F1, resolution number 23-06.
That's on page four of our agenda. That's on page four of our agenda. Going through the list of properties that are in our book, there's a lot of city-owned parcels that the county is gonna be clearing for us. There's one parcel that's missing, and that's the Wilderness Park. Due to the fire hazard there, is there any way we can talk to the county about possibly disking those weeds? That's my question. For that, I'd like to bring up Fire Chief Kristen Nig.
Good evening, Chief Nig.
Good evening, Councilman. Sort of better clarify what the process is that goes along with this. This is a process that's put in place many years ago, decades ago, back in the 80s, and it was ultimately done so because of lack of resources within the city to deal with redevatement. And when I say redevement, a lot of people believe that to be.
This is the microphone on.
You hear me okay? Hear me? Comes out. Comes out, very good. A lot of people believe that that redevement process is synonymous with fire hazard. As, if you read what's, how it's worded in the county weights and measures documentation, it's related to deal with nuisance of code enforcement type issues. Ultimately, when this stuff dries out, it does become a fire hazard. So I wanna be clear that this isn't necessarily specific to fire hazards. It's just undeveloped properties within the city that need to be cleared up, these nuisance weeds that are overgrown, et cetera. The county was brought in to do it because the city, and ultimately the fire department didn't have the resources to clear these undeveloped properties, and that's how it's separated out. The county's tasked with, by contract, by clearing out undeveloped properties, and then us, via my fire marshal, once it becomes a public hazard, will then clear developed properties that have structures on them and are being used for something. So the city's property that you're speaking to right now, I couldn't speak to right now why it's not on this list. It's something we can look into and add to the list if we need to, but ultimately it's considered a developed property, it'll fall under our purview.
Yeah, if there's any way to include that, it is an undeveloped park. So, and it is definitely a fire hazard in that neighborhood. So it is a nuisance to the neighbors, as far as that goes, and I think if there's any way we can get that included through the county, I would sure appreciate it.
Please, and if there's any other addresses you want me to look into, well, prior to the second reading of this, we'll make sure that we have that conversation.
And that would be that entire Wilderness Park area.
Sure, I mean, I don't wanna make any promises standing here. Right now, I need to have that conversation with them to see what their take on it is.
Thanks, Chief. But also with that piece of property, we do, our fire marshal's up there all the time, along with the battalion chief, the battalion chief also, he goes up with them, I think he's been up there before.
Robert Russell.
Mr. Russell. Yeah, so there is eyes on it, but it would be a good idea to see if they can include that. But we do do our goats that go up and clear the brush and vegetation. And I know sometimes the residents, and I understand, because I live up there too, is the fact that sometimes there's a lot of dead stuff up there that they don't clear out. It's dead, and it goes organic, but the point is, is that it's, it could be a serious issue.
But we have people losing their homeowner's insurance over the fire hazard area up there.
So that's another very contentious topic right now, that actually is completely out of our hands. I can tell you that the, there's a 60-day delay on the formalization of the latest update to the fire hazard severity zone maps issued by CAL FIRE for that exact reason. Local municipalities, fire departments didn't have any say in any of that, and of course, the state is just handing these designations down, which is in fact impacting people's ability to get insurance. I can tell you at the local level, there's really not a lot that we can do that would ultimately provide for somebody to get insurance that an insurance company ultimately determined you can't get insurance. That's something that's decided at a much higher level, based off of these state designations. The other thing I wanted to bring forward, too, is when we're talking about clearing a property, one thing we have to remember, too, is that it's an exceptionally difficult and resource-heavy task, because there are a lot of these properties, and that's part of the reason that we contracted with the county, to make sure that we, because they come in all the heavy equipment, they put property tax bills, so that we don't have to fight that later on. So if there's big properties like that, it would be advantageous for us to make sure it's on that list, too. So again, we'll talk about it, make sure we get those on that list.
My neighbor across the street just told me that, just this last month, they got canceled. They're literally across the street, and I'm in a high fire zone. A person came from, that came to our meeting, and.
A month ago.
A month ago, and discussed that, that there's a recourse for residents. I think we need to reignite that, and let's get that out to the public, because regarding that, they just can't cancel you. There has to be recourse, and there is, but I do appreciate you looking at that, because if it's something that, I know we have the goats and stuff, but I think because of the severity up there, and my goodness, come in another few months when it starts getting warm again, and we start drying out, the vegetation up there is gonna be just a tin of box, and that goes across all of our foot and communities, so.
And what, and we're certainly, and we just implemented a new wireless inspection program, so our station three that's up there, and they're, they're, they're not running calls, they have parcels that they go to to inspect and make sure that everybody's kept their clothes.
With a nice new rig?
I like that. The Type 3? Yeah. Just got back from all this, the thunderstorms, rainstorms, have gotten nice and muddy for the first time, yeah. But we were able to help our partners, the North, at Santa Barbara County, and Monasty, and they're very thankful.
Mr. Johnson, does that answer your question? Any other concerns?
Yeah, again, if there's any way we can get that property disked and the weeds knocked off, that would be an exceptional job done.
Oh, absolutely, if you can to get it added on there. If there's any other addresses, or locations you guys want me to look into, please email them to me.
Thank you, Chief Nig. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Chief Nig and I, and the fire marshal, and a couple others, met on this issue last week, I believe it was. Just because, you know, new here, trying to get used to the process, it is different than what I'm used to before. I understand it a little bit better. I also don't like the fact that, you know, at first I saw some of our properties on there, but what Chief Nig was saying is that with the county doing it, we contract with them, it is the best price around to do it, and so that's some of the reason why our city properties are on there. It's not that we're neglecting to do it. But we will look at the parkland, we will look at some other issues, and the fire insurance, and make sure we get that information out in the city manager news letter, and then also just bring it here next time, so. And for context, this renews every five years, so right now, like current, February 19 is in place till 26. What's the county?
Maybe we can have the county look at the trailheads of all our flood controls, too, for overgrown, that's gonna get really dirty and dry, you know, that's gonna be a fire hazard. Alongside of our, some of our buildings in Laverne, we've got a lot of washes in Laverne that I've been watching closely, and that's our trailheads for a lot of our cyclists, and I think it's important that we probably look into that, too. I know I had. I know I had mentioned Mr. Chiotti, and I know they've been very busy, but I think that's something that...
Yeah, and some of those properties are flood control property. We'll have to go through that and update our GIS map so we know what is what.
I think one of those properties is a right east of Via Dymansion, west of the flood area, west of Emerald, east of Via Dymansion, where it comes down, I see in that area. You don't cut it off.
Yeah. There's all, it comes through every shopping center in this town, and the trailheads are getting, you know? But I think that is flood control, and I think that's something we, if not, we backjerk them and clean it up ourselves. If they can't do it, they approve us to do that, but anyway.
I appreciate the insight.
There are some other things that communities can do, HOAs or whatever, in regards to fire-safe communities, that allows for a discount for those communities once they qualify for those fire-safe.
Through insurance unions?
Right. Yeah, their insurance can be reduced. It's a set of safety standards that those organizations can comply with, work up a plan, vote with the Fire Department and the ISO, and get a discount on the high risk and maybe keep your insurance, basically.
Thank you, Chief Nig. Any other questions? Thank you very much. How's the baby?
Sleepy.
Sleeping all night, that is good. We're gonna vote on, I think we should probably vote just together. Should we vote on just this one or just do vote on this one and then we'll do the next one?
Yes.
Without further discussion, we have a motion to accept F one.
Yes, I approve resolution number twenty-three dash zero six.
Second?
Second.
Vote please.
That was approved by all.
Thank you. We move to resolution number twenty-three oh seven. Resolution of the City Council of City of Laverne, County of Los Angeles, State of California, authorizing agreement with the City of Pasadena, the Laverne Police Department to provide supplemental law enforcement services for a term of three years relating to major events at the Rose Bowl. Ms. Bochamp, you pulled this item, would you like to come up and speak on it?
The reason I requested this item be pulled from the consent calendar is, in the agenda packet, it discusses the reasoning for resigning the agreement, and then it gets a copy of the contract. And under the section Fiscal Impact, it says that, under this agreement, the City of Pasadena will reimburse all salaries, wages, or other compensation for services performed, dot, dot, dot. But that does not include the overtime for the officers that will have to remain within the City of Laverne while the other officers are performing services for them in the City of Pasadena. It was not long ago that Chief Lawrence stood at this podium and discussed the staff shortages and have even further been shortage because of the host program. Now, the host program is being paid by federal dollars, but what happens when that money runs out? That overtime is gonna have to be covered by the budget of the city. So it's a double whammy, and just because we have, according to the agenda, this is the third extension of this agreement between the City of Pasadena and City of Laverne. Just because something has been in existence prior does not warrant it for its current. The numbers of crimes and homelessness in the city has exponentially grown, and I don't think that has been taken into consideration to allow these officers to leave our city, leaving our residents, sacrificing safety and security. And I think it's something that the council really needs to look into a little bit more detail. There is no cost analysis included in the agenda packet. So there's nothing to compare to this seventy-four thousand, nine ninety-nine number that Pasadena is willing to pay. Councilmember Cash is always talking about the safety of the residents. At what point do we put them first? It's almost like we're following the federal government. We're always trying to help everybody else but not help ourselves. Well, City of Laverne has a chance to do that now. City of Pasadena has one hundred and thirty-five thousand residents. That's more than triple than what we have here. So, and you know, that's part of Assembly Member Chris Holden's district. He could easily advocate for City of Claremont to have their officers go and take care of it. They could advocate Orange County Sheriff's Department, because I know LA already participates in it. So there are other avenues for them to explore to make up for those officers that they need for special events such as Rose Bowl, Rose Parade, concerts and what have you. But I think that the city needs to address the safety with the increase of phone calls, of homelessness issues, crimes. I had to install security cameras on my, at my house on Amherst, and I've already had three incidences recorded, and luckily, police have been able to respond very quickly. But if they're out doing something else, and now we got overtime, it's like robbing from Peter to pay Paul. At some point, somebody's gonna get left short, and then it will be a liability on the city. And nobody wants to go down that road, we've already seen it too many times. So I really implore you to please look at this a lot more closely. I know it was on the consent calendar, and the staff does the majority of the heavy lifting for you, and you just agree with it, but this is something that is very important, at least to me anyway. And I really think that you should take extra time, maybe table it to a future meeting to make your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bochamp. Anyone else who's to speak on this matter? We'll close and come to the day of the council. Any questions or concerns on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I can answer a couple things. I know Lieutenant Corey Leeper is here to answer any questions also. There will not be a public safety drain on our officers. We would not let somebody go to another agency if we were going to create a hazard for ourselves. So it is purely an overtime when we are fully staffed. We are one of many contracts that the City of Pasadena has, so we're not their only one being there, but again, this is, you know, the safety of our residents is paramount and is first priority, and they will not go if they are on duty here. This is only that overtime, and so if there's any further questions from the council, Lieutenant Leeper can provide those answers.
I did have a question, I discussed with you also, and I've asked this a number of times. My concern too, as Ms. Bochamp had stated, is the fact is, these are very low rates for these officers, and my concern was that, and I just wanna reiterate that, I think that I mentioned it before, but just to let everyone know, that my concern about any labor rates fully loaded, which has been with the packages and everything, if we're bringing these people up to these communities, wanna make sure that we're being paid for our services for our officers, whether it be, you know, with your pension benefits, with your health benefits and things like that, to make sure that we're getting compensated for it. And I just wanted to make sure that that's included in there too. But also the backfilling of the fact that we're not taking away from our residents being protected is more of a service that the community does as we're, I think, is Pasadena Area D also? Lieutenant Leeper? Lieutenant Leeper, Area D?
They're not Area D, but we do have, we do support services as well as asked for us, so.
Good evening, Lieutenant Leeper.
Mr. Mayor, City Council.
Good evening, Captain Edgell Wallace.
Residents, I appreciate you having me here. My name is Corey Leeper, for those that don't know me in the crowd. And for the past seven years, one of the things that I have done is I've done all special events, weather permitting or not, in the City of Laverne. So with that, we initially intended a training that's put on by Pasadena. Pasadena is the premier special gun school in the country. People come from other states, they come to learn from them, and so once we form a relationship, that enhances in our community the safety and the liability that we had in our city. So we've seen that in the community, we've seen it with the Fourth of July, we've seen it in that safety. So I wanted to address Mrs. Bochamp's concerns about overtime. So one of the things that we prioritize is our patrol staff. And so with that, we do have the right to refuse any request for services of Pasadena. So there's a request for services, and we can, based on our current staffing needs in the city and other events, that is always the priority. There are events that we do turn down. Maybe a key event this year they requested for, we did ten events last year. So we do, we do turn some down. So along with that, there was a mention of the fiscal impact. The rates that we bill out are set by finance, it's collected by an agreement along with benefits. Those are, these numbers are a top step for the category, but they're actual reimbursement rates only. So we have some events that we bill for that are for profit, those are higher. Some nonprofit, those are even lower than these numbers, but this we get actual reimbursement. So there's no cost to the city. What we do get is that we get that enhanced safety and liability in our respective... As far as backfill, there's no backfill ever required, because officers at work these events are always officers that are working, they're not working, they're not on duty. You asked about Area D, they're not part of Area D. We do at times deploy out of the area depending on what's happening in our own area. Hopefully it answers the question that you had.
And, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify a little bit, 'cause I talked to Kristi Lopez today, her finance director, and on the cost, these are truly for the time and a half of overtime. So when you think about it, overtime is above and beyond your normal year work, so two thousand eighty hours that we work. So the, how they get this number is they look at the top step of the police officer, the top step of the corporal, the top step of, I believe, it's of the sergeant, and then from that, it's the time and a half plus a little bit on top of that. So it's not the fully burden rate, because the fully burden rate is taken care of during the normal course...
It's only straight time.
Yeah, it's straight time, the time and a half, so.
So the additional benefits are Medicare and workers' compensation.
Yeah.
We have a similar agreement with Pomona, I think, for the LA County Fair.
So that agreement's, because part of the fair is in Laverne, that's not the same agreement, but we have worked with Pomona in the past, worked the tropical event at the fair place with Pomona. But this is a not unusual contract, albeit it appears that Pasadena is not out of the area. They actually are pretty close to us, they're a pretty little city, and the lens that we get from them enhances, it really enhances our safety that we apply in the city. Is impacting our current procedures that we're developing our programs now along with the planning department here.
Any questions? Go ahead.
I just appreciate our cross-string. When we are going out and seeing best practices with other agencies and working with them, I know we have a lot of different teams with Area D and then also with our impact teams and things like that. When we're working with others and we're getting best practices, it brings it back to our city for all of our staff to do. I appreciate though, Ms. Bochamp's question about making sure that we're not taking employee officers off, but you're answering the question of that they're not on duty. I know in my business, when people then call in sick, I still pull those people that are on special stuff to come back in to work, 'cause our number one priority is our residents. Number two is making sure that, helping out the others, but we need to make sure Laverne is always number one priority. So thank you for answering all those questions about that and making sure that we're being properly trained too. Really appreciate that added experience.
Thank you, Fairport Tim, and I can't overstate the importance of our networking in Laverne. We're a small city, we survive by networking, but the mention was made of host, and I'm glad you brought that up, because the way we built our hosting was the same way. We went out and networked with Santa Monica and Pasadena. Because of those models, we were able to start to build our program as fast as we did. We went from having no program and overnight building that program and networked in the three cities of the Tri-Cities. So we've seen this model before, it works really well, and you know, I'll also add that we don't lure officers in for these events. These events are volunteer. We also prioritize the events based on the need. So we don't work their New Year's Eve, the night side events, or the daytime. Those are parties to us because there's a propensity for more qualified. We don't work the Fourth of July for obvious reasons, that's a city event for us. And so there's days throughout the year that we do prioritize to say no, and we're wasting the right to say no under the contract. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Leeper, and I just wanna say that our relationships, as Mayor Bochamp Crosby said, our relationships with all of our cities is impeccable. And I think it's impeccable for the fact they have such a great department, but also the fact that we all, it's the ring of protection that we give, and especially Area D. But Pasadena's a good partner. I know the mayor, Victor Gordo, he's on the council of governors with me also, and the relationships we build make our cities all safer, and I do appreciate that. I very appreciate the fact that you explained it all, 'cause some of us don't know, and the residents don't know that what we actually do and perform, and thank you very much, you appreciate it.
Thank you, Sir Mayor.
With that, motion?
I move to approve resolution number twenty-three dash zero seven.
Second?
Second.
Vote please.
That passed by all.
We'll move on to item seven, discussion of potential considers related to directly elected mayor position. This was brought on by Councilmember Johnson. I'm gonna give you the floor, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me give you a little background here. Back in nineteen seventy-two, Laverne voters were asked if they would like to elect a mayor, and if they would like to elect a mayor for two years or four years. Back in nineteen seventy-two, a little over fifty years ago, Laverne residents voted to have an elected mayor every two years. About a year ago, a little over a year ago, the council made the decision to go to district voting, and instead of going with four districts and an elected mayor, without a vote of the people, the council changed it to five districts and no elected mayor. I wanna make that right again and let Laverne residents have their say and put it on the ballot. And I believe, before we can start discussing this, I need to have a motion and a second before we can discuss it. Is that correct?
If you wanna go forward...
Yes.
Then, then yes. I mean, otherwise, if the council's not interested in discussing it or moving forward...
Let's see if I get a second.
There you go. I can be second.
I would like to make a motion for a ballot measure on the next consolidated election in two thousand twenty-four to restore the vote for mayor. The question being, shall Laverne voters elect a mayor every two years? That's my motion.
Can I just weigh in really quickly on motion?
Yeah, that's, but I can't, yeah, there we go.
Thank you.
Please, because I think we need to talk about this before we move forward with this.
Yeah, there's specific language that would have to go on the ballot that's contained in the elections code, so it'd be preferable to specify, you know, ask for the election code and what the term is, you want a two-year term or four-year term. I think the larger concern that we have, of course, is that doing that perhaps puts us in conflict with the elections code and provisions regarding redrawing our lines before the next census and the risk of litigation with that.
All right, I understand that, and I realize, and it would have to be on the ballot as well, saying that we would not be able to do this until legally able to make that change. And what that entails, I can't say, but at least we have a direct vote of the residents to, we want to have an elected mayor. And it's not gonna get any cheaper the longer we wait to put that question on the ballot.
So my question would be then, if that was the case and we didn't move forward with this, it would be more of an advisory vote when we do a recensus that we would be able to do that? It would be not until, is that correct?
It would not be advisory vote, but it would be...
Not an advisory vote, but just, we couldn't do anything with it because until the next census...
That's correct.
It would be ten years.
That's correct. So it would essentially provide that the directly elected mayor would be factored into the new district drawing after the twenty-fifth census.
Which we could vote on a...
That would be the latest that we could do it.
Correct.
Or what is currently the earliest.
That is the earliest right now.
Yeah, under, currently under the elections code, it does not allow us, we don't meet any of those thresholds for doing anything earlier. Some of those include if we're to annex areas, that would increase our resident base by more than twenty-five percent of our current population. So we would have to annex an area that would add about eight thousand people to our residents.
Is that of the entire city or is that a district in question?
That's of the entire city, so. Yeah, that's under the election code twenty-six oh three, so.
Twenty-one, six oh five, eight...
Twenty-one, six oh five. Mayor Bochamp Crosby. Mayor Protem Crosby.
Yeah. My concern, I know it says here that it was vote, it was by a 4-1 vote, the final ordinance was by a 4-1 vote. It was a 3-2 vote on having a vote by mayor or not. But.
I didn't read that.
I know. No, no, I just want to make sure that that is out there. But my concern is that if we put a vote in 2024, the expectations of our residents would be that the next election would be the having a mayor. Or if not, if they voted yes, then the next election have a mayor. And that, and that would very much complicate what their knowledge of what's happening out there, too. I, I'm not against putting that up for a vote. I know it would cost quite a bit of money in that we put that out there for them as well, for that. But my concern is that having it closer to the census time, when it would then, if it was passed, take effect without, I think that would be a wiser piece to do that. I just very concerned about doing it right now and because of then expectations. I don't want to put on expectations for our residents and can't fulfill those expectations.
Well, I would echo those sentiments and add that, given the parameters that are allowed under the code sections for when redistricting or consideration can be taken into consideration, that it's premature. And so if we have a timeline for when these things can be evaluated and there's no, as Mr. Dahmer indicated, we're not in a position where we're all of a sudden annexing enough land or people to make that change. And the only other two considerations would be, you know, court ordering the council to redistrict or settling a legal claim or at the time of the census. So I concur that putting that on the ballot at a cost today doesn't make sense, because we're nowhere near that point in time. I think the other thing to take into consideration, too, is that we are currently the five on this council, but that may not be the case as we get closer to it, right? In 2028, the mood or the environment may change. The people's desires may change at that point. So I think it's, you know, when we're talking about fiscal impact, there's obviously the impacts related to putting something on the ballot. But in addition to that, there is also the cost of education. I know that, you know, we've, I think, learned a hard lesson in the sense of when we districted in the first place, what type of education would be necessary in order to ensure that the residents have all the information necessary in order to move forward with decision-making. And I think to Rick's point or to Mayor Protem Crosby's point, is that trying to educate that and then remembering to have to do it again as we get close to the 2030 mark are costs that are better served in other places at this time for this city.
So what are we talking about, like a $2,000 cost here to put it on the ballot?
Uh, $4,000.
No, it's about $100,000.
Yeah, but it has about $100,000. But it's not going to get any cheaper.
No.
It's not going to get cheaper.
But that's what the people are.
So, again, I would like to make a motion for a ballot measure on the next consolidated election to restore.
Let me, let me.
Yeah.
I'm pretty much the one that really affected on this election because of that, and I voted against it. I did not believe in a five district. I was believing in a four district elected mayor. Mind you, I don't mind the four years. That's, it really isn't. Because as we all know, as we've been through, and especially myself, been through very contentious elections. I want to do something that's going to have some teeth in it. But the problem is, is that really, it's not going to really have any effect until 2030. I mean, 2032 is 10 years. That's when the re-census is up. And I agree with Mr. Johnson. I, I know he campaigned on it, but I was the direct representative of this. I did not like this. I think that our demographer did a very poor job. Didn't explain it. I had people up to election day saying, you're not on my ballot. I said, well, we have districts now. I think we did a very poor job. As Councilmember Lau stated, it wasn't done well. I just, it wasn't. It wasn't. The demographer, when they first came in, the first two meetings, didn't know what they were doing. Didn't even know that the information they had was wrong. And so I think we were misrepresented, although we voted in. I mean, I voted against it was 4-1 for the final five district selection. But, I mean, it's working fine for us now. But I just don't know, I just don't want to spend money that, right now, for something that we can't even touch for another eight to 10 years. And that's my problem. And as Councilmember Lau says, I may not be here. None of us may be here.
How about you, Gunn Mar?
Well, if I keep doing, if I did keep doing catalytic converters, I might be gone tomorrow. But I, I agree with Councilmember Johnson. I think that the residents were, the vote was taken away from them, especially vote for mayor. And I went through a contentious mayor, mayoral race and won handily. And then to get it taken away from you the next day, it's like, okay, well, what just happened there? But at the end of the day, I don't mind the four years. But I think that the residents were not represented well. I think it was taken away from them. So I'm kind of wondering right here what to do. I don't want to spend residents' money over something that's, it's really not going to do any good at all until later on down the road, a little bit of redistricting. And I do agree, it's just not going to get any cheaper.
It's never going to get cheaper.
But I, I'll go back to counsel, legal counsel. What's this going to do? I mean, what does it make us look like as far as if we do this? We put it on a ballot measure?
This gives residents the vote to say how they want to elect a mayor. Do they want the council to just appoint it? Or do residents want to have the ability to elect the mayor themselves? And that has already been answered once in 1972. And this council, at the time, changed it without direction of the voters.
Does this give us risk or lawsuit?
Well, I mean, there's always a risk. I think the bigger issue really is going to be, is it going to cause the voter confusion? Will they understand that they're voting in 2024 for something that won't happen effectively until the 2032 election?
And I understand that the concept that it's not going to get any cheaper, but my concern is, we're talking about a span of time that different people will be in the city, moods change, people change, and then what happens then if people say, you know what, I don't like that, let's do it again? That's another waste of money that I think, again, it's not, it's not, you know, to Councilmember Porcaccio Piquito's point, it's not $2,000. You know, it's not an inconsequential amount of money. I look at it as, that's someone's salary for a year. Depending on the position, it could be two positions for a year. And so I can't in good conscience say, let's make this decision today, let's cause some confusion, and then let some person work costly on top of that.
Well, there's another point we're not thinking up here. I know that there's a lot of groups in a lot of cities that don't like this. They don't like that, the idea of a rotation. Because it really doesn't affect the community like it was supposed to, which is social economics, race, whatever it may be to split up a community. There's a lot of communities. I know that Ms. Bochamp has been to Santa Monica, and they've been in a big fight over this and spend a lot of money. I don't want to spend a lot of money. I think that's ridiculous. It's already in place. My point is, though, is that if we wait a little longer, and I understand, Councilmember Johnson, this is, and I agree with you, because, like I say, I was the direct representative of this, as far as what happened to me. But, you know, we're here where we are right now. There's a lot of things that may change in the next two to four years with cities. And I think we need to pay close attention to that first, to find out if, if these cities are going to unravel their district voting. I think that's what we need to be paying attention to. I know there's a few cities close by us that aren't happy with it at all. And they're having discussion with all other cities. So this is not an issue that's, it's not a hot button. It is a hot button. Because they broke apart the city voting and how these districts did, there's a lot of chatter about this. And, but at this point right now, no one's going to break it up right now. No one's going to break it up. Unless they bring a big lawsuit and spend tens of millions of dollars to fight this. But like I say, I, I'm more in tune to say that let's look at it in 2024 and see if there's anything that's happened to this so far, as far as unraveling cities. They're not happy with this. It's really not making up the social economic makeup that it was supposed to be. And these, you know, communities of interest, I think we really need to look at that. Because, I mean, it's working pretty well for us right now. Maybe I don't like the fact that I don't elect a mayor, but I sure do like the fact that those four years are great. You don't have to think about it. You don't, you know what I mean? And it's, but at the end of the day, they did take the vote away from the people. But I truly believe, I think we need to just keep our heat on the fire and look at it for, in a couple of years.
And Mr. Mayor, on that, the Santa Monica case is still pending. And as we know, what happens sometimes is there may be a case law that comes out, and then the legislature will react and change legislation to address it. So, you know, if the direction from the council is to not make a decision right now, we can be directed to advocate for what the position, the general position is. Look and work with our advocates, make sure that maybe that legislation is favorable to what this city would like to do, to see the four districts and the directly elected mayor, without any, you know, legal liability or punitive damages potentially in the future to the city. Because that's really what we're looking at is, under the California Voting Rights Act, it's one thing to go from at-large to districts, but to then go from like five districts and flip it to another at-large, even if it is for a directly elected mayor, has not been brought up. And from a legal perspective, I would not want to be in Santa Monica's place or in some of these other cities' places where we have to pay a lot in this. You know, one of the reasons why it seems, and reading about it and talking to some folks, the council jumped onto it, is because there was a change in legislation, because a lot of cities were being sued. And those who acted upon it were given leniency or, you know, were excluded from potential legal lawsuits. So the change from the 1972, as the council did at the time, was compliant with state law. The state law said, hey, any previous direction by the voters for a directly elected mayor is moot. The state legislator did that. It wasn't the city council. The city council was just following what the state law had set up. So we may see that again, but what would be great is if we do get direction to, you know, lead our advocacy efforts and to work with people and to do those connections that were, you know, so desperately and successfully dealing with our local elected leaders and state legislators, to make sure that change benefits us in the future if it comes.
Okay. Are we going to have open floor discussion on this, or do we do the motion first?
Motion first. I would like to make a motion for a ballot measure on the next consolidated election in 2024 to restore a vote for the mayor. And that would be, obviously, when the opportunity exists. That's my motion.
I think we actually need to open up the floor first. So any discussion on this? Councilmember Carter. Retired, Councilmember Carter.
Retired. Hello. Well, first off, I've never had the opportunity to welcome you publicly to the, you know, part of the council in our city. And you're very knowledgeable. We're all talking about how you're very sharp. You know what you're doing, and we're very impressed. So that's great. As you all know, I was on the council when we chose to go with districting. And you are correct, Mr. Dahmer, that we were trying to save the city from being, you know, a lawsuit of $30,000 to $40,000. That's the whole reason we moved forward. I have a suggestion that I would like to offer telling you, is I know what it's like to run a campaign. Two years would be miserable. I only had to do it every four years. And so you could bring it forward, that if we do it in 10 years, that the mayor is a set position. Put that forward. But, you know, would you do the survey? Offer. Do you want to elect a mayor? And do you want it for two or four years? So that could be an option, if that's legal, to do it at that time. But I agree with Wendy and Rick, don't do it now. Do the survey later. You, Steve, I know you made a campaign promise, and you've done that by bringing it forward to the community today. But by doing what they're saying, there's going to, we have all this new development. All these new people will be moving in. Some of us might be moving out. You don't know what we're going to be doing in, you know, nine years, 10 years. So wait on the survey, so that people do see action right after the survey is done. And then I suggest looking at a mayor's position, if it's going to be elected, to, I think four years is appropriate, but put that to the public for two or four years. So then we all have that option to decide. But it's not fun running a campaign.
Thank you, Ron. Ms. Bochamp.
I don't think anybody is considering the possibility of not having to wait the 10 years for the next census, because there are two things factored into the CVRA. There was never supposed to be communities of interest separated by district lines. And that's exactly what happened with the Sierra Laverne HOA. And not only that, but they also, it's not a formal, it's not as formal as a HOA is, but the community of Amherst, the majority of those residents that were involved with the Amherst project and also the Fruit Street project, the district line goes right down the middle of Amherst. So the north side is District 3, the south side's District 2. So that's two communities that have been separated by the district vote, or the district lines that were voted on and approved, which to this day has never been revealed as to who chose those district lines. I would like to commend Councilmember Johnson for following through with what he had promised and getting this out there. If we were to, I mean, I just don't understand how that was approved to begin with. You have the demographer stand here and talk about communities of interest not being separated yet. That was the lines that were chosen to separate. What I'm more concerned with, though, is City of Santa Monica's case, they won their case. It automatically went to appeals. I met with the City of Santa Monica myself, because I couldn't get any answers over the phone or through email. So I drove down there and met with them. From my understanding, it says pending when you look it up, because you can't see the actual case online. But from my understanding, the plaintiff's going to, they're going to withdraw their appeal, because they know if they lose, then they got to pay the court cost for the City of Santa Monica, which is in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I know that sounds like a lot of money, as Lau explained, that it could be somebody's annual salary or multiple salaries. But when you're talking about people losing their right to vote, we lost 80% of our voting rights. But more so, you have people in the unannexed areas who lost 100% of their vote, 100%. They can't vote for any of you guys. And we're talking about the people that live on St. Mark, Baseline, and all those little streets over by Leroy Boys, Haynes Boys Home. And it infuriates me, because this country is based on that, and you just decided to take that away from them. And nobody's considering that at all. And we're just going to address it 10 years later? You know, how fair is that? If they don't have the right to vote, and that's like going back 100, 200 years. How about taxation without representation? You're throwing Measure LV 3/4 of a percent tax on them, but they don't get the right to vote to say who's on this, on this council? That's insanity. You guys really need to stop and think about this, because there is a way to do it without having to wait the 10 years. And honestly, if we had waited and not, and not gone to district voting and waited till we got the demand letter from somebody who felt like their voting rights were actually being oppressed, we could have addressed it then. I have, I also have a suggestion of how you could do it. Not just have the vote of whether you want a mayor, yes or no, in two or four years, but do it like they did with the recall for Governor Newsom. Are you in favor of a recall, yes or no? If your answer is yes, then choose an alternate of who is going to replace him. So if you're in favor of a mayor, two years, four years, yes, and then choose who you would like to see, whatever candidate's throw their hat in the ring. And you knocked two birds out with one stone. But this is, this is a very serious issue. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I?
Thank you, Ms. Bochamp. Yes.
Address to a couple of points. There is no provision in the CVRA towards the losing plaintiffs to pay. So if, if they're, if they lose, they won't be paying the Chinese fees anyway. So I'm not sure what, what the information was that was, that was shared with you. Moreover, even if they withdraw their appeal, the Supreme Court, this California Supreme Court having granted review can retain review to make the decision anyway. The other concern, or the other comment I wanted to make was about the proposed annexation. If an annexation goes forward, of course, those residents will be attached to an existing district and will be allowed to vote in future elections.
But I think the question was, the comment was that the people that live in the county area, not part of the city of Laverne, were taking away their, their right to vote. They never voted for any city council member prior.
Never, because they haven't been part of the city. Never, because they haven't been part of the city. But once they do become part of the city, then they would be added to the voting rolls, added to a district, and they would be fully entitled to vote for a district representative.
And I know the city has gone over to the area that was spoken to, just south of Leroy's and talked to that neighborhood for annexation, and they had astounding no. They did not want to come into Laverne. They already felt they were Laverne, which we all feel they, they, they're part of us, but they, they didn't want to pay the taxes and be part of the water system they would have to install in that time for annexation as well. So, but those people have never voted for city council members.
Did they vote for mayor?
I think they voted for mayor.
No.
You can actually ask Mark Wyeth. Because he's never voted for.
I'm in the county area too, so it's.
They're lost. They're completely.
We get to vote for county members?
Yeah.
Which basically takes place without that element. That's it. County board.
Chair, we have raised him.
Just a few moments, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. What did you find?
Yes, yes.
Wonderful. Good evening, I'm in the council, city manager, city attorney, city staff. I just wanted to kind of echo some of the concerns about the cost and timeliness of this measure for this proposed, you know, suggestion to put this on the ballot in 2024. We, the council voted less than two years ago to move to a rotation and less than a year since the rotation had been in place. I haven't seen the city fall apart and you guys all look great with the currently rotated or self-elected mayor. I think spending $100,000 in 2024 or something that's not going to go into effect until 2032, what a variant of population could be a part of the city, with very little input as to where the city, how the rotating mayor is going, I think is the benefit. I think we've got nine years or eight years to figure out how this works and if we like a rotation, there are not, I think, the folks still are concerned and thinks that we should go back to an at-large mayor. I think there should be more discussion of that and have that closer to when it would actually go into effect. I also would be concerned in the legal landscape of going from five districts down to four districts. And I think there's a lot to determine in the next, you know, seven to 10 years, if that would expose itself to another challenge by going from five districts to essentially four. There's representation, more of the CVRA would have some concerns with that or some political potential game have issue with the reduction in the number of districts. So I recognize that this is a hot button issue. I appreciate that the folks would like to vote for mayor at large. I just don't think now is the time. In 2023, yeah, in 2023, to be making a vote that's up on the ballot that in fact wouldn't take place until 20, but 2032 in the early. So that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Come on down.
Rich Gill. Well, as you know, I ran in 2022 and I ran on the same thing. I ran because we lost that vote for mayor and I wanted it back. And I pushed so hard that, as you see, we actually gained a specific person in District One. I do want my vote back for mayor. And I will make sure that I get it back by any means possible. A lot of people lost it and they wanted it back. So I suggest that when given the opportunity and when given the choice, the people are going to want it back. They enjoyed their vote. They want their vote. And I know you guys will do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gill.
Good evening. Kathy Kalusek, Third Street. I just have a quick question. Has anybody ever consulted with our insurance company that does our E and O's insurance? What do they think about it? I mean, I think the way we're situated keeps us pretty litigation proof, but if we change things, if we hadn't done things, what is their opinion on it? That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we didn't consult with the CGPA.
JP.
JPI.
CBT JP.
Primarily because if we were sued, they don't, they don't represent us in CVRA litigation.
We're on our own.
We're on our own.
Anyone else? Ms. Tyner.
Cynthia Tyner. There were two words that came up in this conversation, expectation and education. I'll simply say, as far as expectation goes, I think everybody in this community expected to be able to vote for a mayor. As far as education goes, I don't think one iota of time was spent to educate anybody in this community on the possibility of taking away their right to vote for a mayor, let alone know about district voting. As far as cost goes, there's a lot of people who paid a really high price to be able to gain the right to vote. You can't put a price on it. Talking about $100,000 to give us that right back versus what some other people lost in order to gain that right. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Tyner. Ms. Barry.
Good evening. I'm going to move this up because I'm tired of not hearing. Bear. Okay, bear. Good evening, family. We're in the court. There's two facets to this discussion. One is the vote. The second is when? Okay? So there might be disagreement as to when. But what I want to know is the five of you, do you stand behind our right to vote? We want to vote. It was taken away. I was here for a lot of those meetings when resident after resident after resident came up and said, we want to vote for our mayor. And thank you for your vote in saying that we should be able to have that and yours as well. We want that vote. What can you do tonight to ensure we get that vote, whether it's eight years from now so that it can take effect or whenever it is? We want to know that you five will stand for that. That's my question.
Thank you, Ms. Barry. Anyone else? Chair. We'll close the floor, publish discussion, back up the desk. I just want to make sure that, that this is written, if it does pass a motion, that we're not going to be up for a lawsuit. It's more of just that when it's, when it's time that we can vote on this, we want to look at that in the next cycle of, of our census. So.
If the, if the motion tonight is to move forward, we would be bringing back to you proposed ballot measure for everyone to discuss. At the present time, the code has pretty stark language about directly elected mayor and the term. I believe that we could, because of the way that we would word the ordinance, I believe that we could provide that it wouldn't take effect until a later time. And then all those other issues that you all talked about.
So it's going to come back. If we do approve this, it's going to come back again.
It's going to come back one way or the other, I'm assuming, because it sounds like everybody's interested in having people go on it the question they go with.
And Mr. Mayor, I would concur that if there was going to be a vote by the council, we would want to bring back the official language. We will certainly have the time to do that.
I want to vet it out. If this is the case, I want to vet it out and make sure that what we have is, is, I don't want to say bulletproof, but yet fireproof. Because there's one thing I don't want is the fact that I've been through lawsuits already with the city and it's been very uncomfortable, to say the least. And it's very damaging to our community and it takes years for us to rebuild, which we've done. I don't want to see that again. And I think, but at the end of the day, we did lose our right to vote for mayor. I will agree with that. But with that, Councilor La.
So I, my question, or actually what I would like to go back to is a point that Mr. Dahmer made about vetting this out and obtaining direction in terms of moving this forward. Because I, again, I still think it comes to the second question that you posed, the when, right? When does it, when does this take effect? And the reality is, voting on it now just means it comes back. It causes confusion and it is still a physical issue for us. And I think there are a lot of other things that, for instance, the mayor brought up in terms of other things that are going on in other cities, pending litigation, where does it stand? Where can we make the most reasoned and well-intentioned decisions on behalf of the city and in the best interest of the city? And I don't know that I feel comfortable in terms of information provided at this point to say that we should put this on the ballot for the next election period. I'd like more information. I'd like to know what's going to happen with, you know, the lawsuits that are pending, what's happening with what you're saying in terms of other cities that are questioning, is this the right model? You know, I do think there's a, you know, a question that I've heard from other cities about, is there a particular size city where districting makes sense and where it doesn't make sense for other sized cities? So I'd like to know what those points are before we come down with something concrete today. And I will go back to the fact that the population in four years, five years, six years is not going to be the same and the climate is not going to be the same. So, you know, those are the concerns that I have at this point.
Thank you, Councilor La. Councilor La.
Yes, I just want to restate that the cannot take place, if passed, till 2032, when we have a lot more things from now till then. I also, if we, we could put up a, saying that we'll put it for a vote in 2030 and then the council at that time can revote on it, that what we state that we want. Because then that's right before it's going to happen. Then the expectations of the residents are happening right then. And we know of outcomes from, from any litigations that has taken place or been, been resolved. The, the point of, it's not going to get cheaper any time later. If it does move to, if we do move to mayor vote, it is a more expensive election because it's citywide. And then we're going to have that ongoing anyways, but not just wait, do it now, do it now, and then people are waiting because they're, they're expecting it to happen. If, if we put this to a vote today, I would have to be against that vote, but not against putting it to a vote to the people, but against that it's happening in 2024.
And I, and I think that goes back to what I'm, you know, what I'm hearing, that there is concerns being voiced by the public. There's been concerns raised by Councilmember Johnson. But again, I would go back to, you know, what City Manager recommended in the beginning, is that we provide direction related to this in terms of gathering of information to make a reasoned and intentional decision that makes sense at a time that makes sense. And so I would love to see that be the direction that we move in so that we can gather the information that's been brought up during this meeting.
If we have direction tonight on this, it could take months to do this, months and months. It's not going to happen the next month or the following month. No, this is going to be written up and we'll review it and then review it again.
Correct. Mr. Mayor and Council, we have up until it's 188 days prior to the March 5th election in which to place measures on ballot. So I don't have that figured out right now. I can look at it, but.
We have some time.
Correct.
Okay. Any more discussion? Then we need a motion or a motion?
Motion. I'd like to make a motion for a ballot measure on the next consolidated election in 2024 with the question of, do the residents want to elect a mayor for a two-year term?
Can we change that to a two or a four?
To a two or a four-year term. It's another question on that, on the ballot, it'll probably cost more money, but that's fine. We, this is not a final, but it is, or, I would like to ensure that we get this on the ballot for the 2024 election.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Councilmember Johnson, maybe if the direction, and correct me if you turn it go wrong, well, you guys, but one of the things is, are you going to direct us to bring back the necessary resolutions and ordinance language for a vote? Or is this, will that be included with your motion to actually go ahead and put it on and then just within that timeframe of 188 days, prior to 188 days from March 5th, to make sure all that gets back so we place it on the ballot?
So yes, I would like the, the language to come back for approval because I, I haven't written anything up under the.
What would be the proper direction for that, to do that?
So what I want tonight is of the council to say who's for this or who is not.
So the, the direction would be for us to return in an appropriate time with the materials and information to place the item on the 2024 ballot.
So, so with the direction that we place this on the 2024 ballot?
Right. So that, that would require a second and majority vote.
I'll say.
All is in favor?
Measure is approved, three to two.
With that. Public comments. We good? Mr. Dahmer, we good?
We should announce the full vote, so.
Vote watching at home?
Yes.
You want it again?
You want it again?
Yeah.
So, yeah, dissenting votes were Councilmember Lau and Mayor Latem Crosby. Including votes were Mayor Hepburn, Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember Keshfi Yegid.
We are going to move to public comments. Ms. Bocham, you have a public comment?
I wanted to request it to council in the future for projects that are, like we discussed, the ARBA money to go to the seniors for a one-time repair. What is the status of that? How many residents applied? How many actually were approved to receive monies for their repairs or something like that? Just so we can get an idea, is there, is there still money available? Is it, you know, is applications, are they still being accepted? What the status is and, and other programs that are like that? Because we, we hear about it here, we see it on the agenda and then it just kind of disappears and we never know what, you know, was it a successful program? You know, people want a little bit of feedback on things. So in the future, if we could have that on the website or just a mention in the comments at the end of the meetings, one of the council members says, oh, this project, you've tackled all the different committees you're involved with, if they could bring that up, I think that would be very informative for the residents.
We can do that tonight.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Anyone else, public comment? Ms. Nula.
Kathy Nula, Phil Terrace. I just have a question about the ADA money that we spoke about last time, if there was still money left. Can that be used for better speakers in here? I know my neighbor cannot hear most of what you guys are saying. And even I can hear it, I can't hear it, especially when it's someone on screen. So is that money still available to be used for ADA things?
We will check to see if, that's, you bring up an absolutely wonderful point about hearing disabilities. So we are currently doing an assessment. We've had a couple consultants look at different things for ADA accessibility in City Hall. So we will add that to it, specifically the hearing impairment, visual impairment for the chamber. That's right.
And that's the, that's the CDVG money, which we're trying to unleash that because it's a nice pot of gold for us right now. So yes, they've been reviewing, and I know staff and community development director, Sheer, and also our staff. It's a, it's a hot button. It's a, it's a hot button.
Okay, thank you.
Do you wanna call you Councilwoman Carter? Ms. Robin Carter.
Okay, two items. I've always praised our city staff, and I want to do that once again. I think the city of Laverne has been fortunate to have such wonderful employees throughout our city. And the one I'd like to compliment today is our Public Works Department. I live up in, I'm the president of the HOA up in Live Oak Homeowners Association. And we, my concern has always been when we come out of our south gate that Live Oak Park is right there, you know, the fire station's there, and we have the park with tennis courts. The scary part is as you come around our bend, there's so much brush there that you could not even see the playground where the children play. And one night I saw kids out there, teenagers, doing a fire pit on the kids' playground equipment. And then they're always down there doing things they shouldn't be doing. So I, I, I did a work order. I did it the right way, did a work order online. And then I met with city staff up there to show them. They were so wonderful. They have cut back the brush. They made suggestions. They even told me what our HOA could do to work with them for our expense, the HOA, to cut back brush even more. And then all the DG that was out there, they replaced with concrete and a little fence that goes along there so they can't go down the hill. And they cleaned up that whole area, and they're not even done yet. They're continuously looking at what's best for the community and the park area. And I just think that's so wonderful. They don't just do what is, you know, asked of them. They look beyond and to see what they can do to make it a better atmosphere for everyone, especially children. So I applaud our staff. And, you know, Romero is a main person I've been working with. And then, of course, all the guys up there, they've been wonderful. And so I just wanted you all to know that we have great staff. One more quick item, only because it was at the end that, you know, past public comment. But I did want to just make one statement on the EV since it's gonna come back. I do know, I do have a Tesla, as Tim said. What's wonderful, when we take trips, all we have to do is push a button on the big screen, and it comes up with every charging station we can go to. So what we do is we just stop at a restaurant. Right there, they have charging stations. They're very, they're put in places that everybody can think what they could do when they go to the station. So we'll go eat lunch, let it charge for the hour, then we're off to our next place. That could be very beneficial for the city. If you really think about where you could put those charging stations, it could be near, let's say, you mentioned Target. Right over there, they could have it at the far end of Target, where they can go to Broken Yoke for lunch, breakfast, and then get back in and go to the next. But it would bring people to know what Laverne's about. So I'm very much in favor of these charging stations, you know, and look at where they go. The only other problem is, last summer, remember Edison with the electrical grids? They told us we couldn't use our air conditioning, so how are they gonna give us the power to do these?
Why, do you just wanna end it with a can of worms, or what?
Sorry, we're gonna break staff.
But I will say the one thing about electric, electric vehicle, if anybody has them, which Tesla technology is the fact that we sit there eating and saying, you have five minutes to get back to your car, you're gonna be charged another $10. This is crazy. So technology is there, it's there. They know where you are, they know what's doing. Also, Ms. Carter, that I know that the city staff on Public Works is looking at the curbs and gutter and the walkways up in your neighborhood on Esperanza.
Esperanza, good.
Right, so they are looking into that because it is a hazard. So it's checking.
Good. Oh, I'm happy to hear that.
Anyone else for public comment? Ms. Anderson. You're like the Matrix. Except it's Mrs. Anderson.
Anna Anderson's long gone. So last, two meetings ago, I talked to you about the homeowners associations. And Eric was kind enough to send me a list of homeowners associations that have public open spaces. So we have a group that are, that is really upset about this because these are actually private spaces. They're not public spaces at all. And I don't know where this term came for these homeowners associations that have private open spaces, if I'm saying it right. But anyways, one of the members of the group has gone to almost all of those associations. Those associations now are plastered with private property and all these legal signs that this is private property. So they've had problems. Okay, we've, we've almost hit all of them now. And one association, I think it's on Emerald, I'm not, I'm not sure which one. But she talked to one of the owners that was the original owner, and he's also on the board. And he has this concept that the park in there belongs to the city, and they have to take care of it. And that's not true. I don't know, he's got this concept now of that because that's probably what he was told when he moved in there. This thing's a mess. And you gotta remember, these signs have to be, ours, we have one, and it's, we just made. And it says, you know, private property, what it includes, what you're not supposed to come in to do and everything. But these, these, these HOAs, I think, before you put them up for sale, should have that put in those properties so they know, people coming in there knows you can't use these parks. They're not your parks. These belong to the HOA. But they're not being done that way. They're being sold as, and I don't know who in the city came up with this, that, you know, that's, that's not gated so anybody can use it. That's not true. And if it is true, that's a private property condition, because that is private property. And this one guy thinks that he's taking care of a park that belongs to the city, but it's not really a city's park, if you look it up. So he's got this concept that's all wrong. Some of these guys even have this company that is monitoring the park now because they've had so many problems. This has gotta stop. We can't say you're allowed to use this park because it's not gated. It belongs, it's, it's an HOA, it's a property that they're paying for. So this is, I think she hasn't hit two of them yet, but they're all like that now. The one in Puttystone, it's full of those signs. And if you have to call the police, you're gonna have to have the right sign on there so the police can say, hey, this is private property, you have to leave. If there's no sign up there, then what's the policeman, what's the policeman supposed to do? If you're calling them in because people are using your property? So, you know, I think before that Amherst property goes up, somebody needs to, we're gonna have to talk about, because we have all these kind of new properties now that we're building, I mean, we didn't have these problems 20 years ago, 30 years ago, that, you know, we're gonna have to come up with some kind of new codes on these things for the builders. Builders can't be in charge. They can't. You gotta have the citizens charge in this.
We'll review that with staff. Some good information.
Yeah.
And if you could relay that information to staff, that would be great.
Oh, me and Eric. Eric's very good.
You guys, I know Eric's been in conversation, so.
I'm not, I'm not blaming Eric. He's just doing it.
No, 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 he explained it, but I think it's, it's good for us to understand how this works.
Yeah, and it's, it's a mess. It's a mess.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Close public comment. We'll move it up to the days. Councilmember comments? Who would like to start? I think Councilmember Lau is to start, if she can get her speed.
I did it. So a couple of things I just wanted to share. If you have not seen on social media or on the police department's website, they are doing Safer Internet Day. And I bring this up because at the last YFAC meeting that we had, we had a lovely presentation regarding cybersecurity, which I think is really important for, not just adults, but for, for kids. And so they're putting on a Safer Internet Day tomorrow. It's from 11:00 to 12:30. You can register on their website, so if that's something that you're interested in, take a look. But I do think it is very important, you know, a lot of things happen online that people can be easily tricked into doing things or giving away money or doing things that are not good. So definitely take a look. I also wanted to share that this Saturday, the day before the Super Bowl, which I don't care about because I don't care about either teams this year, but, so sorry if you're an Eagles fan or a Chiefs fan.
Fill that to the other side.
But this Saturday, UOLB is hosting the National Girls and Women in Sports Day, and that starts at 11:30, and it's open to young women in the community. So if you have a, a young woman in your life, a daughter, granddaughter, cousin, whatever, we are having alum from the university who are now working in sports. Women who are working in sports, one working in the NFL, one working in the NHL for the Ducks. I think another one for the NBA, and I think another one for the LA Soccer Club. But if you're interested, please feel free, you can either email me or you can contact Jenna from the tier, which is our athletic director at the university, and ask about that. But I think it's an awesome opportunity to network, especially if you've got young people in your lives who are interested in moving to sports. Considering how male-dominated it is, I think it's always nice to network and figure out a way in and see if that's something you're interested in. So 11:30 AM to 2 PM on Saturday. So if Riley is interested, let me know. The other announcement would be the Tri-City Mental Health Association, is, agency, sorry, is hosting their next meeting at 5:00 PM next Wednesday, which is the day after Valentine's Day. So there's also my shameless plug for those of you that may forget that Valentine's Day is next Tuesday. I don't think the women will, maybe the men might, so this is called, instead of this, your kind reminder to don't forget your wives and your mothers and your child. And then just in preparation, the UOLB gala this year will be on May 6th, and it will be on campus again. It raises a ton of money for scholarships for our students, so if that's something they are interested in, please take a look. And if you're interested, I'm happy to give you more information on it. Couple other little things, just, I know there's a lot, and this is after the mayor already, it's like, short and sweet. If you haven't met Tupelo yet, Tupelo is our new canine. She just had her first birthday, so feel free to find treats for her. But she is a friendly dog that will be out and about in the community. She's a snuggle bug. She's adorable.
I wish I could post pictures. I've got pictures.
She's so cute.
She's a, she's a pound, and she is absolutely fine.
She's adorable, and she really just does love the snuggles. And then the other thing I wanted to share for those of you in the community who may have noticed, the giant oak tree in front of Wilson Library at the, at University of Laverne fell down during the rains. That tree was planted, I think, in 1918. So it survived two world wars, you know, depression, the depression, and a whole bunch of other things. But I just wanted to let you know, the university is looking for ways to engage the community in terms of commemorating the tree, doing things that will repurpose the life of the tree. So be on the lookout for that. And then last but not least, I did just want to mention Lunar New Year, as you know, was two weeks ago. And unfortunately, that was the weekend that there were the shootings in Monterey Park, Half Moon Bay. And I just want to say, you know, thank you to our public safety folks for reaching out. I know that in partnership with the different cities that we work in and around in this area, I know that they reach out and sent their, not only their condolences, but their help and assistance where needed, so I appreciate that. I think it's just a good reminder again that you just never know what is going through someone's mind. And so I know you hear me talk a lot about Tri-City mental health, but they do offer quite a bit of programs and initiatives to assist when people are going through times of trouble. So I urge you to be familiar with their resources. It is important. So as always, be kind. Hope you have a wonderful week. Hope you are feeling loved all month.
Thank you, Councilmember Lau. Who would be next? Councilor Cash, you're ready.
Oh man, you know what? Good job, Councilmember Lau, to get almost 99.9 of things from me. I was gonna say, so I'll make it short and sweet. I want to thank God for our first giving opportunity to be here today. Second foremost, I had a great opportunity to be at the League of California Cities where I tended to represent Laverne the best I can, and hopefully nobody got a complaint.
Not yet.
Okay. I was trying to see if I could put on Tim Hepburn name on there, but it was a dead giveaway. So it was a great opportunity to networking, networking, talking to the cities that surround us and the 479 cities that are currently participants of the League of California Cities. Some of the great training, of course, I really enjoyed is developing an effective city council and city manager team, one team, that's right, the key to good governance and city success. And your legal powers and obligations of government and conflict of interest, and several other great advocacy and key city issues that we have, followed by some network luncheons and dinners that I tried to attend as much as I could. And so a great opportunity, one of the, one of the great classes everyone liked, obviously, was the social media and digital communications and civic engagement. A great opportunity over there to talk about the various social media content that we can have and connecting the community with us. So I want to thank City Prayer allowed me to attend that. And while I was there, I noticed there are a lot of amazing committees they have. One of the, I spoke with President Alitash, who's the mayor of Artisan, president of the, of the league, and recommended that they start a veterans committee there that wants, one of the committees that they did not have. I was looking forward to hopefully having further conversation and dialogue, see if that will be, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Cash. Councilor Johnson.
Okay, Mayor Hepburn, I'd like to thank you and Cash Faguita. Thank you for getting this back on the ballot and letting residents decide who, if they want to have an elected mayor or not. That's huge. I appreciate it. Tim, you mentioned to me that you were gonna say something about Redmond?
Go ahead. Please, please.
One of my childhood friends, Jerry Redmond, we grew up together for many years. His father recently passed away, who was a longtime member of the Laverne Police Department. His family, Mr. Redmond and my parents raised children together. Don worked for my father for some time. Jerry, my best friend growing up, worked for my dad. And I worked for his dad later going to college. Just a lot of good memories with the Redmond family. And Donna, his daughter, served this council for many years. Just very involved in the community of Laverne. And my heart goes out to the family at this moment in time with the passing of Don Redmond. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson. Mayor Potem Crosby.
Last week, I was lucky to represent the city. One of our, our most influential partners of our city is our local public school district. Bonita High School was going through their WASCA accreditation, and I got to be on their welcoming team and to go and meet the, the people that were evaluating them. They had four different people from, from different cities and school districts. And the high school was simply amazing of showing off what great things and programs they have. We're lucky to have a, a public school district in our city that is so successful. Our housing, people come and move in to our city, not just because how wonderful the city is, but how wonderful our school district is as well, also. And then on Wednesday, Mayor Hepburn and I honored Oak Mesa Elementary School on their Distinguished School Award that they received. And that night, the school district also appointed Mr. Matthew Ween as their new superintendent. And so I have five different points that Mr. Ween said about the school district that I wanted to make sure and highlight here because how it represents our city as well. Bonita is in the top 10% of all unified school districts in California with respect to academic achievement. The USD is, was ranked the San Gabriel Valley's best school district by the Reader's Choice Awards. The USD is a three-time winner of the Top Workplace Award by the Inland News Group. Their reading program was ranked number one in the state by the California Reading Coalition. And they have distinguished schools, and they have a two-time winner. and they have distinguished schools, and they have a two-time winner of the National Blue Ribbon School, which is Shoal in San Dimas, but are great schools here in, in Laverne. So, I just wanted to congratulate, um, Benita Unified, uh, Mr. Ween, Oak Mesa, and Benita High School with Principal Richie, um, doing excellent, excellent jobs, um, representing not only their school district, but our city as well. Then, tonight, uh, I had a pesky, uh, about 15 minutes before visitor at my house, and they're out and about, so you really need to beware.
Cookies.
Girl Scouts.
Even though you eat them, buy them.
They're so good. She came in and, oh, I just bought out almost every cookie that they had. I guess, uh, my new resolution's always gone by this time, where those Girl Scouts eat the chocolate.
What's your favorite, the bollinger?
Oh, yes.
There you go.
So, so they're out and about, our local entrepreneurs, um, helped them out, and, um, when, if they come, lovely little girl with her mom right next door, and, uh, says, come on in and let's, uh, my whole family came out, all picking up different cookies. Um, I always wanna thank George May and the library, always great programs that you put on there, um, and just thank you coming out and, uh, representing our city and, and having those great events for, for us, too, so appreciate it.
George, I'm on your wifi right now, it's amazing. Well, this was an extremely busy few weeks, and, um, one of the main ones, uh, last night, uh, Kim Kraus, who's been in our restaurant family for years, her family, her husband, Joel, kids Matt and Heidi, they had, they had a horrific fire in their house, no one was injured, but they lost the house pretty much, and, um, they're well taken care of, but they had a fundraiser last night that Chases, uh, for all the food purchases, gave 15%, and whatever people wanted to donate, so I went over there, got some great to-go, and then chatted with everybody, so, um, just think about those two, uh, she's, she's the whole family, she's been, um, she's just been incredible in our community, I remember 20-plus years that she's been in the restaurant business for, since we've been here, and, um, anyway, so that was really nice of Dory and Sean, the owners of Chases, that was very nice. We, uh, Councilmember Lau and myself, we were the grand opening of the new Vet Surgery Center, uh, the Pomona Valley, um, he, yeah, yeah, the main society, opened up a surgery center, so if, if you don't have funds and things like that, it's not, the surgery center's for it, obviously, you can pay if you have the funds, but incredible. You get a chance to go take a look, it's impressive, brand new, six-plus million dollars, uh, most donations, uh, and it's, it's just a beautiful facility, it was, it's gorgeous, so, multiple surgery, uh, places inside, uh, so it's, it's just a beautiful place, and it's gonna service our, our community and the surrounding communities. Some bad news about the gold line, apparently, the California, uh, State Transit Authority had earmarked three major projects, one was the extension of the gold line from Amona to Carmont to Montclair, and unfortunately, uh, that funding, which was $798 million, uh, was taken for another project, we were like number three project to complete the gold line, which has been on time and on budget since the, the, since the inception, which ours finishes a 9.1 mile, great, but I've talked to, uh, some member, Holden, and he said that they, there's still funding, there's still $5 billion out there somewhere, that hopefully we can get this funded, so we can complete it to Montclair, but then the goal is, is San Bernardino to pick up, to pick it up from Montclair to the Terry American Airport, which would be wonderful for all of us. Let's see, what else do I have here? Yeah, so that's very important. Um, I do wanna put in our hearts and prayers, Turkey, that had the horrific earthquake, and they're still experiencing it, and it's gonna be just an unbelievable amount of lives lost in that earthquake, so let's keep our hearts and prayers and donations to Turkey. Uh, also, our hearts and prayers go out to, um, the communities of Monterey Park and also Half Moon Bay for, uh, the horrific loss of life for them. With that, also, um, I think that, uh, I know that Chief Nigg had talked about it and it on the website regarding fire safety, we've had an awful lot of structure fires here, residential structure fires, so there's, I was gonna do a minute with the mayor also, but he's also put it on his website, it's so important for fire safety, just a few little things, keep your house clear of stuff around the house, put electrical cords, uh, multi-outlets, make sure those are clear, make sure you clean your dryer vents, make sure the tree, if it's live and Christmas, the minute it's over, get it out of your house, make sure there's clutter, that, these are a lot of attic fires, a lot of the, whatever, laundry fires because of the lint being full, the simple tasks and simple things, pull the stuff out, clean it up, but make sure you check your outlets, make sure you check your outlets if they have burn marks on them, simple stuff like that, because these fires just destroy lives and their belongings, and we've been very fortunate on no deaths and loss of life, but the point is, is that we can probably prevent some of them, but I think the most important part is to be aware, and, uh, 'cause it's just, we had a fire, uh, in Laverne, our second home, and it wasn't a lot of damage as far as internal, but the smoke and the heat, it destroys everything, so let's all please be careful, and we'll be pushing that again, Chief Nigg, is that correct?
Yes.
For fire safety, so I know they did a video and they posted it on their website, but maybe we can get that on the city website, post that also, Chief. Oh, State of the City. That's Monday, uh, next month, next Monday, the 13th, we're talking about, yeah, that'll be at Hillcrest?
Nope. University of Laverne.
That's what I said, University of Laverne, yeah, sorry, guys, it's not here yet, but yes. Yes, we will, we'll be at Hillcrest. Uh, University of Laverne, the Abrams?
Campus Center.
Campus Center. 10:30 AM, there'll be, uh, stuff, munchies, munchies, coffee, juice, things like that, so, we're not doing lunch, we're changing a little bit, and the city's working on that, so it should be fun. With that, our next council meeting due to the holiday, the holiday, uh, we will, our next, uh, meeting will be Tuesday, February 21st, 2023, at 6:30 PM. Uh, we will be closing in honor tonight for Don Redmond and Keith's family, uh, in your hearts and prayers, please, with all of them. With that, we are adjourned at 8:40 to 9:00.